This meeting on October 2nd is called "The Provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law," scheduled in the annual meeting process and transmitted to the Two River Times and the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building on September 30th of 2019. This remains continuously posted as required notice under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice has been available to the public and so following the office of the Minister of Public, official action will be taken at this meeting. All rise of the Pledge of Ladies.
I now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell. Councilmember Bouillon. Councilmember Mizola. Councilmember Ryan. Mayor O'Neill. All present. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session? All in favor? So ordered. We're now into executive session.
Law," was scheduled in the annual meeting notice and was transmitted to the Two River Times and the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building on September 30th of 2019. This remains continuously posted as required notice under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice has been available to the public and so following the office of the Minister of Public, official action will be taken at this meeting. All rise of the Pledge of Ladies.
Councilmember Braswell. Councilmember Bouillon. Councilmember Mizola. Councilmember Ryan. Mayor O'Neill. First order of business we have is the public hearing final reading and vote on ordinance oh 19-16, in order to amend section 10-14 of the Borough of Highlands revised general code to establish requirements for business certificates of occupancy.
Essentially, it's just requiring or regulating certificates of occupancy for commercial enterprises. It's not consistent with what Middletown does.
I think we're a bit jammed with how we have CEOs conducted through Middletown, but I absolutely have strong pieces of the regular CEO is $50 and this business CEO is $25 gross and that equals between two groups. I don't know how they arrive at, I don't know if they arrive at the $50, I'm not sure if they arrive at the $25. Somehow they have to come up with some kind of formula that can fix things what it appears. But as it is, like we tell you, why smaller businesses, less sort of footage and average house, and that CEO is a constant, like I'll use my office as an example, which is like one square feet, there's one sink and one toilet, which is shared with the other five rooms, but this next door. And if I have, and I'm not, because I'm not, I'm not going to leave it, I'm not leaving, I'm not going to leave it. But if one were needed, that would cost $25, which is great, it's just a concept, a given, where then you go almost any house you have, but some houses are quite important, it approach 5,000 square feet, you have five or six full baths, bedrooms, kitchens, all that still has to be in, if you do a CEO, it's got to be, stove comes on, you've got hot water and all the tickets and water bottles, but that CEO for a five house, perhaps, all the water features and the one box is different. So it's grossly, something has to be done. You could base it on how many home fixtures you have and have the gas system, and maybe go square foot. Right now, this is extremely biased against the, some businesses like a restaurant company, you know, you could justify it. There's no justification. Anything else?
I'm sorry, we're stuck. I have to make these arrangements. But sure enough, for $50, please, $50, we actually go, that doesn't wait to be announced actually, costing the borough, and the auditorium factor, and you, so it's decided, so that's why I'm free one, yours still has to be.
What is the, what is for home? What, what is for home?
I find the check more than.
They don't have a, they don't.
They don't do.
You don't have to have to go home, whether that's here. Here, that's why we need to take, take, T W.
If they don't, inspections for CEOs, why are they doing business, especially 501?
I thought it was a case of, you made on fire class, inspect 500 square feet, one sink and one toilet. A restaurant, yeah, I didn't see.
I don't see the difference.
If you don't, fire section, it's another fee, and if you look at the application, there's levels of fees for fire section.
I know, higher impressions are different, because it's a state, right, state should be, it should be exactly, because it's going to be something that's streamlined, working at the fact that it's, there's nothing.
I don't know.
Nothing.
No, I mean, and I'm not a person who, well, I think there should be something, um, formal that they use that defines what it is. It's not fair for 500 square foot, one toilet, sink, if the same rate of, 5,000 square foot of bathrooms and kitchens. It's not, it's not fair, and it's not the reason that he's in the time, you know, 5,000 square, and only get, maybe you should get more.
Like, there's two different CEOs, right? So the CEO, I, I don't know, they, that's like, I don't know.
If it involves, if it involves renovations, if it's going for, to find what it's within, because then that's all, the CEO is more.
Not, not a new.
So the final inspection is, surprises.
That's, 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 and then you can see CEO.
I, I could, I would, I would, I would be, I think I would need to talk to the inspector of my network, their boss, because that's what I started, I thought you, but the servants have a lot, that's true. I, I, anything else?
Call the vote by roll. Councilmember Braswell. My apologies. Councilmember Braswell.
I'm only under the, you know, but I understand you, because it's void right now.
Councilmember Bouillon.
I will join Mr. Braswell, though, you know, on the principle of that division, I far too long entered the work of Braswell upon updating the number of the residential expansions.
Councilmember Mizola.
I have to say yes, because this is something that's absolutely necessary, as a state of the public, when it's about the end of the business, and it is a gap that I want, so my voice is yes.
Councilmember Ryan. Mayor O'Neill. So ordered.
It happened, it happened. I wasn't expecting to, if they.
Ordinance 19-16 is drafted. Next, we have the introduction of ordinance oh 19-17, in order to amending the general code of Borough of Highlands, creating chapter 16 entitled Affordable Housing to address the requirements of the fair housing and the uniform housing affordability controls regarding compliance with the Borough's Affordable Housing obligations and on the statute of regulations to be transmitted to the land in support.
Councilmember Braswell. Councilmember Bouillon. Councilmember Mizola. Councilmember Ryan. Mayor O'Neill. All are in favor?
Next, we have the introduction of ordinance oh 19-18, in order to amending section 8-3 of the Borough Code to update the application process of discrepancies required for street vacation.
Councilmember Bouillon. Councilmember Mizola. Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember O'Neill. So ordered. All in favor? Next, we have the consent agenda resolutions. We have six resolutions. Does anybody want to approve any of the resolutions from the consent? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Braswell. Councilmember Bouillon. Councilmember Mizola. Councilmember Ryan. Mayor O'Neill. All in favor, so ordered. Next, we have reports from various departments.
Thank you, Mayor Townsall. We've also developed areas, Catherine's goal, as well as shadowing under contracts, I met with both of them last week, they've certainly permission to open up parity that we've published, they both know they're the diligence, my implication is they will have closings in the early part next year, and I've seen a very, very preliminary, a concept garden, it's going to be a arena, it happens, it's going to be built in, it's going to actually be a arena, so I think I'll pump up the information for the best possible catch, and the second piece, shadowing, in our meeting, he gave me, I have what you want to do, on set record as well, so as soon as we get those, whatever the process is going to be, and they have to work on some top detail that are probably going to be developed very, very shortly, some of that is awaiting, or over later, so I think this is where we think, I have a few more. For doing two things, I think the farm is looking to come to challenge, the urban farming, it's a door farm, I'm working with somebody that just opened up one super, and in the little western 600 square foot building, they are just eat easier words of farm products and workforce here, so looking for space for that, as well as several scanning, trying to find an area of this, status square, physical policy, perhaps, especially after that, I'm going to pull out, maybe still again, I got a whole pullout down, I want to see what we can do with that, and that might be viable, viable, people want to pursue it to a country, meaning that I intended, I, covers, basically 20, 20 lights meeting, I also coordinated a meeting with Sheila, one of the pilots of Sparkles Society, I was going to be working in tandem with them for anything going on in the future, I support the recreation meeting, the closing, the vacation meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's been fun, Mike.
Good, we, I didn't see much before, here for the 22nd day, we just came on a lot of permits and creating, and we're working. As he said, we've got some structure, it's going to be familiar, it's going to be built in October as well. The corn color green is, that's very nice, that's good, we all see some water that comes out of this, it's controlled, we know that it's happening, there's a bad rush order, that's why there'd be more rain, and, uh, the corn will, one more project, they're going to be working, discussed this week, going drop street to Juneberry, and then they're going to be doing next week, drop street to Bay Avenue. That being said, they're looking at additional curb work along center, we see that there's some water that's getting on either side of center, and we're going to look at, pretty considerable, concrete, curb along that area, probably wander out through the, current curb line, and, uh, we're going to be, on either side of the street, at, um, the CDB project on July 2nd has been done as well, you'll see that there's curb work being done, ADA compliant, crosswalk, and that should be, it should be, uh, two for the work, the contractors, the, 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 the construction, on, on Grand Court, that's on Monday, and that's going to be concrete, curbing, so long, um, Grand Court, Chest, right. I would say, that's, everyone who's been speaking, we've got a building, my name, our house, no incidents, pretty great, this Friday, Saturday, Tuesday, behind, so, that's the whole community center, everyone was now, it was some spooky though, and, uh, they did want to, that's, that's, that's about, oh, wait, there is one more. So, it was great, the, uh, mapping, people mapping, she, uh, they keep out, if they're working, and, like, they're, I would, some different locations, and that's, where they said, the correct map situation, uh, and then two of the people are out, and that makes people, uh, happy, and they're looking, I asked them, they, the same presentation, or the other presentation, be, um, for the town, that the information that they gave was quite intricate, and if they just put it out there for the residents, it's a little weird, and confusing, so, uh, we're looking at doing that, might actually do it, it may well, um, because they think it would be a good idea, to know, understand, uh, whether or not it will, um, because where, we're like, 600 nodules for our area, there will now be like 900 nodules, which, and, 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 imagine trying to go on the map, for 600 now, now will be 900. Um, they will pick up, depending, different, um, different weather conditions, and, and have 50 additional storm types, each storm that happens, so it is like, 50 additional storm types, let's say, yeah, so if we take, for each, well, it happens, it happens, so for each storm that happens, like each color, there will be 50 different outcomes, and just so you know, one of the main maps were, um, the capes, and, and what are, you know, just. Oh, yeah, I, so, it was, what, the manager, who, uh, on my side, and they were looking at that, so, I think that'll, I don't know.
Bouillon.
I'm done. I'm done. We're starting our, 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 we're starting 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 our, we're starting[1511.32]